Clarkson City Council Meeting, I am Mayor Beverly Burks. And at this time, we will have called the meeting to order and have roll call. I'm Mayor Beverly Burks. Vice Mayor Yasu.
I'm present.
Councilman Carroll.
Present.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins. Councilwoman Hopkins. Okay, Councilman Perkins. Councilman Perkins. Okay, we do have quorum, so we will proceed. We'll have the pledge of allegiance, so everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will do a review of the agenda, are there any updates or changes? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted by common consent. We will now move into the administrative business, which will be the approval of the work session minutes as well as the last month's city council meeting. Council members, have you had an opportunity to review?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Are there any? Are you ready to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I need a motion.
Can we slide the screen back down, Robin? I'm, I moved to approve the minutes from the. A, come on, I'm sorry. All right, I moved to approve the minutes from the work session and special call minutes on April the 30th, on March the 30th, 2020, and the council meeting on March the 2nd, 2021.
Second.
I quickly moved to second to approve the minutes from the work sessions, special call minute, I mean, special call meeting minutes for 3:30, 21, and council meeting 3:21. Are you ready for the discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, we will now move into reports, we will start with our planning and zoning, Ms. Cowie. Ms. Cowie. I don't know if she's on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, I'm so sorry, Madam Mayor. I will proceed with the planning and zoning report. The, the planning and zoning board will meet on April the 20th for the planning and zoning board meeting to hear an annexation request at 11:45 Cleve Mark Drive, so all those who would like to hear about that request, please attend our meeting at 7:00 PM on April the 20th. The zoning rewrite consultant team has extended the day for our one-on-one interviews for mayor and city council for April the 7th and 8th. Please review the email that was sent out to mayor and city council to schedule a one-on-one meeting that is convenient for your schedule. And thank you to those who have already participated in those one-on-one interviews and who have scheduled your, who has already scheduled your interviews. The comprehensive plan steering committee had a very involved meeting on March the 24th. Our next meeting is scheduled for this month, but we are solidifying that date as of today since we had so much participation and those who would like to participate on our comprehensive plan update steering committee. There's a virtual community planning institute training that was sent out to our planning and zoning board members, and that's a community planning institute training for our P and Z board, and that's April the 15th and 16th. And thank you to those participants who will be participating in that training. The zoning rewrite technical advisory committee meeting is scheduled for April the 13th at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom. If you have received your invitation letter but have not RSVP, please do so as soon as possible because we look forward to your participation. And your feedback is required. In the zoning ordinance rewrite, there is a survey that will be available on the city of Clarkston's website. And it will be available on our social media outlet that will have a blast posting on April the 7th, April the 9th, April the 13th, and April the 15th. We, the city clerk and I will, she will post that information for me, thank you, Ms. Ashby, that posting will be around either 8:00 AM, 12 noon, or 5:00 to 6:00 PM each of those days. And if you do not see that posting, please feel free to contact me, Shawana Cowie, the Planning and Economic Development Director at S Q A W I Y at cityofclarkston.com. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that ends my planning and zoning report.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie, we will now move into the city manager's report, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Robin Gomez, the Clarkston, excuse me, city manager, good evening to everyone. As a reminder, please keep, be mindful of this meeting to keep your communication muted when you're not speaking, of course, when you're about to speak, remember to unmute. I greatly appreciate that, thank you. To the mayor and council, an update on our city operations as I provide to the council every Friday, we are still in the same operations level, our city offices are still closed to the public, we are still able to provide nearly all services electronically via email over the phone, and of course, others via scheduled meetings, appointments, so we continue to provide just about every city service with very, very few exceptions, for example, our tennis courts are still closed, we're hoping to reopen those soon, we are hoping to reopen limited days and hours by toward the end of this month, it appears that a lot of the COVID-19 indicators are moving in the, in a better direction plateau, but combined with the increasing numbers of vaccinations, and again, we do continue to encourage everyone to continue the, to prevent, help us prevent the spread by wearing masks, distancing, et cetera, staying home if they don't feel well, if you don't feel well, but also encouraging folks to schedule and make appointments for the vaccines. There will be vaccinations occurring here in Clarkston on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, excuse me, Thursday and Friday of this week at the Clarkson Community Center through via CORE and the International Rescue Committee. Those are occurring via online, where folks can go online and make the appointments, and I was looking for that site that I seem to have lost, but I will place that shortly up on the screen, but again, still encouraging folks to take all the preventative measures, the virus is still around, there are variants around, and although we hear it every day, it's still important to remind everybody to take those precautions, but again, we still continue with the meeting, these meetings as we have the work sessions, the council meeting, we will at some point likely in the summer return back to in-person meetings, and of course, we will make everyone aware of when and how and those revised processes, what they will be once we do go back in person. But in the interim, of course, any, anybody needing any information, they can certainly email, text, call, and we will continue to provide those responses in the applicable city services. A few, want to thank everybody who did come out on the 27th for our waterways cleanup event, nearly 70 folks, including city staff turned out and collected a couple of tons of trash and debris and just made our city significantly cleaner, greatly appreciate, including folks who continue to do that periodically even after that event, who just as they're out walking, notifying us of areas needing attention, helping us to keep our city clean. And just wanted again to thank everybody with an update on the city's construction, our streetscape construction, we are at the point where just some minor details are being concluded with, including some brickwork, some rails that have been installed, finishing the stormwater retention pond area on Market, North Indian Creek, and a lot of other small details, the contractors will begin what is called making the minor, well, mostly minor adjustments, repairs as part of their quote punch list that is several pages long, those will be occurring over the next month to six weeks, just making again, minor corrections and redoing a few things that need to be corrected, including for example, just repairing some cementing, cementing of sidewalks and some driveway aprons, for example, or replacing some of the landscaping, so some of the things that that are, for lack of a better term, still under warranty as part of the construction, but that should be concluding here in the next, hopefully within, as I said, by the middle of May, and then hopefully in June shortly, you know, sometime after Memorial Day before the 4th of July, we will look to have a grand opening, or perhaps it could be tied in with the 4th of July. We're open to suggestions, but to have a grand opening and likely close Market Street, have it in the evening that will include fireworks and a lighting of the decorative lights, for example, on Market and East Pond, so we'll be on the lookout for that in June or early July. As we conclude one project, we begin a second one, and that project being the Mel Avenue Trailhead, or the Trailhead near Mel Avenue, Roland Street improvement project as well that was discussed, some changes to it at the work session last week, and there is an item later this evening to discuss some changes to that. But the contractor's sole construction has begun, that worker's beginning that work this week, they will start on that Trailhead side over near Mel Avenue again in Church Street, and then work their way east toward Market Street, again, along Roland Street, the project will has components of it on Hill Street, and then depending on later this evening, there could be other components or changes to that project. But that is the next one that is, that is beginning, at the same time, there is some preliminary review continuing survey work of the Market Street sidewalks that, and another project that we're hoping to begin later this summer. And, but there will be certainly meetings and approvals required prior to that work beginning as well as, I'm sorry to go back to the, the Roland Street, the Mel Avenue, Trailhead, Mel Avenue, Roland Street project, there will be a public meeting next week. We will be notifying the residents on Roland Rogers Hill and likely even on College Avenue, some of the surrounding streets, all the residents and businesses about an opportunity to come out and see what the plans are and provide any additional insight, but really to notify all of them, again, the contractor already provided a written letter to those addresses that will be impacted, so we're, just to continue the communication as to what's happening. That will occur next week, I don't have the, I believe it's on the 15th, but we'll have an update on that in the, when the agenda comes up later at the meeting. Again, appreciate everyone's patience with all the construction, it has been obviously a couple of years and we continue with it. But progress does require some patience, and the city does look significantly, significant improvements in the last few years, so we're hoping just to, to continue making improvements for years to come. Coming up in the next month, as we begin to hold events, activities, and certainly some of our local organizations begin to hold events as well, I wanted to share that we will be having or the, an upcoming event on April the 25th, and perhaps the mayor would was going to bring this up as well, but a low-cost pet vaccination clinic on Sunday, April the 25th at the Mylan Park. They, the Animal Alliance of Georgia requested to use the tennis courts to hold those activities that are listed on the screen, including providing free rabies, the, and then lower cost services such as nail trimming, microchipping for dogs and a few for, for cats as well. So hopefully, tell your friends, neighbors, anybody that you know that has a pet to come out on Sunday, April the 25th to Mylan Park. And related back to the vaccinations, I apologize, I couldn't find that screen, but again, the vaccinations are scheduled for this Thursday and excuse, Thursday and Friday at the Clarkson Community Center, that internet site, and I will post it a little bit later, is clarkstonccvax, To schedule to make an appointment, they are providing the Johnson and Johnson one-dose COVID-19 vaccine, again, you do need to make an appointment online. They will have interpreters available in multiple languages, including Burmese, Kurdish, Portuguese, Swahili, Tigrinya, et cetera. So please encourage folks to come out and or to schedule that or at another location, there are various locations throughout our area offering the vaccine. And wanted to go over to our financial update through March. We are three months through the current fiscal year, and let me get to the. Again, our finance director emailed this document to the mayor and the council earlier today. As I stated, about a quarter of the way through the year, you can see our, our expenditures were a little bit below just under 22% for the current year of our quarter of the way through, our revenues, again, we typically collect the majority of our revenue toward the end of the year. But later on, the, through this report, there are the, once we get to the revenue detail, a comparison in the current year to the prior year, and we're fairly close to where we were last year, taking into account that the pandemic had just started. We were in about the, the second full week when really we, the slowdown and the stoppage occurred, so our revenues are not very far off from where we were last year. Some of our expenditures are a little bit higher due to the hazard pay for the current year. And however, once we do receive the American Rescue Plan funding, then part of that likely part of that funding will cover the hazard pay that has been provided to employees. But really, no, no significant changes other than just in, in salaries being a little bit higher again because of the additional 10% hazard pay so far that is being recorded in salaries for each department. And even our community budget, we have the only expenditure we have provided so far is the, the quarterly payment to the community center. We have not provided any of the others, but we will continue to provide, for example, to Skull Radio, Tell Me a Story, and then any of the other task forces, if we proceed with those, then we will proceed with those expenditures. But again, really no significant changes other than salaries, I'm just going to scroll down to the revenue side, or just to cover our, on the revenue side. We are, the only revenues that we are not receiving that we were receiving the first two and a half months of last year are the reservations at the women's club, our pavilions. And so we haven't, we have not reopened those, so those do not show any, still no revenue going all the way back to last early March, but most of our other revenues are fairly constant, again, we receive the majority toward the end of the year. Some of the ones that we are ahead of last year are business and occupation tax, our, and then some of the other revenues that we were not processing last year, for example, work permit and ID cards for entertainment, we were not processing last year, but this report shows revenue from the prior year only because it was for the, before we closed our city offices, we're fairly same with building permits, we've had an increase due to the considerable investment and development and redevelopment in our city, and some of our other revenues that, again, we are, we have not received include our, the women's club reservations, pavilion. Our court fines are still below what we collected last year at this time, and they're likely to be pretty well below our, the same amount that we've budgeted the last couple of years, just over half a million. And so again, no, really no significant change, we are about 76,000 less than at this time last year, although again, last year we were open for two and a half of the, the three months that are listed on here, so we will hope, you know, continue to obviously keep an eye on this every month, but our revenues, I would from so far are improving and will improve over the prior year, and we are looking to reopen barring any significant changes. We will allow for the re, the folks to be able to rent the pavilions and eventually the women's club, we are looking to open our pool the same time period as we have in prior years, we're scheduled to open it on May the 28th, the Friday before Memorial Day, and it'll remain open again as it has all the way through Labor Day daily through the early part of August, and then the last month on the weekends. It will have a limited capacity, but we are looking to to again reopen it as we have in prior years. So we continue to again, monitor all of the revenues and the activities that we have related to our financials, we do not know where next month, we should receive toward the end of the month, or really early June, the tax digest from the county. We don't have any indication as to what that might look like, but we did have a slight increase last year taking into account that our overall revenue was less due to folks appealing their county assessment of their, their property value increase, which again, the county determines that, not us. But, and, and we're still not quite at the point that the developments in the city are, are in the tax digest, the only ones that will be on there will be the completed units at the well, we're not sure if the Starnes will be on there, that's going to be pretty close, but the only one that we know are, that will be are the Glendale Road Townhomes, those that have been completed, and right now there are about 12 that are occupied. Those will be added to the tax digest, but certainly the gardens at East Avenue are not completed, the the development down on East Ponce is not completed either, the Blue Ridge Atlantic. And the tiny homes are getting close, they may be on the tax roll, but I know we do have a deadline later this month to add any, any properties, and certainly to include the assessments that are billed on the property tax bill, the sanitation and the stormwater. So likely, we will see that additional revenue and fit next fiscal year. Also, keep in mind that we have, or I've brought up in prior, at least the years that I've been here, the likelihood of lowering the milage rate, we will take into account, we did not include that for this budget. But certainly something that the mayor and council, you know, if you express interest in that, and I think some of you have, then we will certainly look to incorporate that into the budget. But certainly, the intent was to do, to start in, well, it was to start in this year, but due to the pandemic, although we haven't seen a significant, significant impact or loss in revenue. But certainly something we can review, and once we bring to you that, once we have the tax digest, and we will make that determination as to lowering the milage rate. And just the other revenue, really no significant changes in our other revenues, the last one I wanted to cover is our sploßed. We did receive our distribution through February, so the sales tax that businesses collect, they collect it in one month, then they must pay it to the state by the 20th or the 25th of the following month. And then the month after that is when we receive our, just like other governments, our distribution for the additional 1% sales tax, so far this year, we've received 300,000, $30720.58 which is about 12% more than after the first two months for last year. And then about 8% more than in 2019 for those two months, so we have seen nine consecutive months of of that revenue higher than, than we have in the existence of the revenue. So sales tax being an indicator of economic health tells us that consumer spending, those goods that are subject to sales tax continues to be fairly positive. It continues to increase. So that's good for the economy, it's good for our revenue that we use for our capital projects, and we, we hope that just continues going forward. No reason to think that it won't barring any any significant changes, but I wanted just to briefly go over, this is our our sploßed, the history of our sploßed revenue on the screen. You can see the, the collections in the first year, it was only in nine months in fiscal 18. The first full year in 2019, we collected about 97% of the budget. We averaged about 152,000 per, almost 153,000 in fiscal 19, which was a little higher than in fiscal 18. And then as we move into last year into fiscal 20, we again decreased mainly because of the two months were, were due to the, the virus of the collections were much lower in March and April of 2020, but then they began to rebound. And from June through December, those six months were much higher than the, than the previous two years in 18 and 19. And then through the first two months, as I said, we're averaging over 100 and, just over 150,000, but again, January and February were, have been the two highest, two, the two months higher than in 2019 and 2020 for those two months, so it, again, barring any, any other, you know, major incidents, which we don't know, sales tax can be volatile. We are, we have been, our collections have been faring fairly well. And lastly, the other item I did want to mention that as we begin to prepare for the budget for next year be, again, taking any comments, any suggestions that certainly anybody on the council or really anybody, any residents or businesses may have, please feel free to let us know about budget for fiscal 22. Happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, council, did you have any questions or comments, I'm really looking forward to that digest because hopefully we will be able to lower that milage rate. No questions? Okay. Great, we will now move into our city attorney, Mr. Quinn, did you have a report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, I, I do not have a report tonight. Hello?
Madam Mayor, you're muted again.
Sorry, sorry, we'll now move to council remarks and reports, we'll start with our vice mayor, Councilman Yasu. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two events that I want to report that I attended, that is Friday, March 12th, the reopening of French Forest. Friday, March twelfth, the reopening of, uh, Friendship Forest, um. Uh, Animal Sanctuary and, uh, uh, it was really great to see the, the. Completion of this, um, this, uh, project, um, and, um. Uh, the second was Saturday, uh, the twenty-seventh, um, the waterway cleanup and, um. I wanna thank, um, the city staff, um, uh, and also, uh. Larry Kaiser and his whole team, um, I wanna thank, uh. Everybody, all the volunteers that came, um, and, um. Uh, we really need to do those kinda events, uh, every now and then, um. And finally, I also would like to remind, uh, our residents that April is, um. Autism Awareness or Acceptance Month and, um, uh, later, uh. I would invite my son to speak briefly, thank you.
We will now have, uh, remarks from Councilman Carol.
Yes, I also attended the, um, the opening at French, at Friendship Forest, I was glad to see that. A project come to fruition, uh, and also attended the cleanup at Rivers Alive. And I was glad to help, uh, clean up some of, clean, clean up some of the creeks in Clarkston, I was also glad to see this is a great turnout, I was impressed that many people came out. As the, the city major said, we had over seventy people come out, and then the last thing I'd like to report is I got my vaccination. Uh, for COVID nineteen, I got Moderna, uh, the first shot on March twenty-first, I'm scheduled to get my second shot. On April fifteenth and no side effects, not even a really sore arm, it was fine. Uh, and I'm looking forward to getting my second shot, I encourage everyone who has not been vaccinated to go ahead and get vaccinated. Yeah, there are lots of options, the Johnson Johnson one was one, uh, Publix and Kroger both have available. Openings in the Atlanta area, if you're interested in getting your vaccination, you haven't yet, but I would encourage everyone who hasn't been vaccinated to go ahead and get vaccinated. So we can hopefully get past this pandemic, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carolyn, thank you for getting your vaccination shot, very grateful for that. Next we'll have Councilman Hassan, do you have a report at this time?
I have not a board, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, we will now move to Councilwoman Deborah Johnson. You're still unmute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, yes, I would like to start, um, by, um. Basically, I don't know if Mark ever joined the call, welcoming Mark. At the pres- pleasure of seeing him being sworn in virtually, first virtual swearing in, so congratulations, Mark. And on the twenty-third, I actually attended the GMA. Um, weekly COVID conference call and I urge all of my teammates to take those. And take a little time and listen to those calls, they're very informative. And on the twenty-fourth, um, I attended the first steering committee, um, meeting. For the Clarkston Comprehensive Plan on the twenty-fourth and on the twenty-seventh, along with, uh, Wett and. Um, Councilman Carol, I attended the waterway cleanup event as well. And it was, I did pick up, I think Dan said point something ounces, which wasn't much, but I, I put forth an effort.
And Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you, and Councilman Perkins.
Everyone, so, uh, in the, in the last week, I don't have a lot to report since I was only sworn in last Tuesday. Um, but, uh, I did have the pleasure of attending the opening, uh, Friendship Forest before being sworn in and, um. Also the, the, uh, river cleanup, and so it was a privilege to. Get to be a part of things that, uh, folks have worked on, um, before, um, completed our GMA, uh. Training for newly elected officials last week, um, and also attended the National League of Cities Call. Um, uh, just related to updates on the American Rescue Act and funding, so it was very informative and, uh, also. I had the pleasure of being a ride along, um, with CPD for the first time, so it was, it was great getting to know our officers a little bit better. And, um, sort of learning about the, the ins and outs of their work, so. Uh, appreciate, I believe it was Sergeant Corella who was my. Uh, tour guide, uh, for that evening, so, and I have no further updates.
Welcome, Councilman Perkins, we're very happy to have you and congratulations. For being our first virtual, um, Zoom swearing in recipient, so thank you and welcome aboard.
I appreciate it.
Now we'll move into the mayor's report and I was happy to participate with the reopening of Friendship Forest. Um, to also help with the, uh, cleanup with the river, riverways cleanup. Um, to attend the GMA new electively, new elected officials training. Um, I also attended the American Somali basketball tournament that was happening, um. This week, it's been going on, so, um, students from across the country are participating in the tournament, so I would. Have the honor of participating and watching our Clarkston students, uh, in the tournament. I'm also, um, looking forward to our pet day, which, uh, our city manager mentioned. Which will be April twenty-fifth, so I'm very happy for that. And looking forward to May, um, working with our fellow counts, fellow cities. Um, Stone Mountain, Decatur, Avondale Estates, so that we can celebrate Bike Month, so we will have a formal resolution for that. Um, where we will actually take part with our, um, Stone Mountain Trail. So I'm looking very forward for our cities to collaborate and work together, and so that concludes my report. And now we will move into public comments. Any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comments. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the direction of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to forty minutes and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comments contain a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate fa- follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment, however. The business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. Mr. Gomez, who do we have signed up?
Mr. Brian Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Good evening, everybody, uh, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for the new format for the meeting minutes, I love the new detailed layout, it's awesome. Um, I, I also want to thank you for posting up the video recap of the last meeting so quickly. Uh, I like seeing this snappy reply in detail now. Uh, earlier this week, uh, or sorry, yesterday, uh, I emailed everybody my input about the Roland Street. Uh, development in sidewalk and ease about location. Uh, if you would please, if you have not read that email, I implore you to do so and also to look at the photographs that I attached. Um, I have a comment about the alcohol ordinance that were changed, we're talking about tonight. Um, after thinking about it for the week, I definitely, I support the idea. But I think we should put a sunset clause built into it, so if anything does go wrong. You can basically let it expire in one year and if anything is bad, then we let it go, if it's working well, we re-up it. I think that'd be a great idea, uh, and I'd also just like to thank the, the, um, city. The, the city looks great, just trying to thank, uh, everybody who keeps, uh, working on the, keeping everything looking nice, the trees, I noticed they were. Uh, trimming the other day, so the city looks great and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medford, Mr. Gomez, who else has signed up?
Miss Amy Medford.
Mrs. Medford.
Um, hi, thank you for all the work that the Public Works has been doing, this streetscape project looks really nice and it's coming along. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for all the hard work that they have done on that, I also, um. Wanted to say I was disappointed to see that the CDA had been, um, dissolved completely and I'm. Concerned about what's coming next, I would urge the city council, you were so fast. To get rid of the CDA, I would urge you to put in something else very quickly so that we can get on and. Hopefully get some good things done for the city, I hope there was a plan in place for that, for that going forward. Um, I also wanted to comment on the alcohol, uh, delivery ordinance, that I think this is a good opportunity for a new business. I realize the concern with brick and mortar, but the brick and mortar stores have had the opportunity to deliver alcohol since July of last year. They just haven't, so the fact that GoPuff has now decided to, you know, take on this business model, I don't think we should punish them for that. I think it's a great opportunity, it certainly diversifies our, um, offerings and abilities. And I think it encourages some pretty healthy competition, I do agree that there are some potential problems, so I think a sunset ordinance would be a great compromise. A way to still protect businesses as well as encourage new things to get started. And provide a way that if things go bad, it's, it's done, you know, we're testing the waters, but if things go great. Then we can look at it on a permanent level. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smithford, Mr. Gomez.
We had Ms. Taranika Bell.
Yes, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, bye, Taranika, so for those that may or may not know, the Clarkson Development Authority, a revitalization, economic development growth. Um, tool that align with the Clarkson twenty forty comprehensive plan was dissolved. On Sunday night, the final day of the Georgia State Legislative Session on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The act will have detrimental repercussions to the development and growth of the city of Clarkson. And the actions to move forward with dissolving was negligent and definitely not good governance. There was no public meetings and no resident members of the CDA were consulted before bringing it to the agenda. Moreover, state legislators were advised that the majority of the council voted in favor of the resolution, which was not the truth. Seeming that this was a three-one vote with one member being absent, a vacant seat, in opposition by a city council member to the resolution. Furthermore, the rationale to dissolve lacked research. For alternative options by experts and the various statewide entities that helped the city council cultivate the idea for the structure initially. One of the main reasons cited for the dissolve was that it was never utilized or activated. But I'd like to remind this governing body that it was your job and responsibility to enact and activate it. Seeming that all three appointed city council members to the CDA are current sitting city council members right now. This act definitely does not move the city forward, but sets us back and brings no new businesses or economic development to the city. Additionally, I think that the proclamation is great as it relates to item G four, to recognize Pet Month in April. But as legislators in Clarkson, I think that this governing body of legislators should enact legislation with standards. To bring awareness and provide solutions to how do we deal with our fur babies and animals throughout the city of Clarkson to protect them. Similar to the efforts of DeKalb County and the city of Dorville that most recently adopted an op- an ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Bill, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Gomez.
Sorry, we had Ms. Susan Hood.
I, I, I don't know if she's on the line. I don't think she's on the line, um, who, who is next?
Tracy Bishop.
Uh, Mr. Bishop. I don't see him on the line.
And then I just had a phone number, but no person, six, seven, eight, five, nine, six, seven, 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 one.
That's me. I, um. I actually made it text to you, anyway, uh, yeah, so, um. I wanted to say I, I hardly disagree with Ms. Bell, by tea, I think you guys did the right thing. Um, so, du courage, as they say in France, um. Showed a lot of courage, and I also wanna say, I appreciate the city, what the city's done to get. The Wildlife Refuge, the Wildlife Sanctuary, open, ready for the, the spring, for people to go down and enjoy it. Uh, looks a lot better with the weeds gone and, uh. Uh, everything tidied up and I was really pleased to hear, uh, Rodney say that we're going to. That, uh, he is going to commit, uh. Uh, his crew to regular, uh, I think it's a weekly maintenance there and that's, uh. Much needed and very good thing, which is a very expensive and wonderful asset we have. I do however, wanna bring, uh, attention to, um, n- number of projects that are still not complete. I'm not sure that we have all the plantings that were supposed to go on that grassy slope in yet. Uh, but I know we haven't had the pollinator gardens, either the rock garden or the old tennis court area seeded yet. And we're getting into warm weather and it's gonna be a little, uh, pretty soon, so, uh. Uh, I would love it if, uh, Mr. Gomez could give us an update, see if he has a date of completion. Uh, or, uh, when a vision, you know, for when he thinks it's gonna be completed. Hopefully not another two or three weeks because it's, uh, like I said, it's getting late in this season for picking seeds. Um, I, uh. Wanna get a new transportation environment committee together pretty soon and, uh, have us start discussing. A vision for, uh, for Forty Oaks to hopefully, uh. Uh, refine and present to you guys for your consideration, uh, I know that the house there is, uh, a big issue. But also, uh, a vision statement for Forty Oaks, it would be nice to, to come up with and. I would, uh, I look forward to putting a lot of energy in, into the future of Forty Oaks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadlock, and Mr. Gomez, that concludes all public comments, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and now we will move into new business, which is. Item G one to amend section three dash five eight, new licenses permitted for certain designated businesses. To define and permit a retail delivery shop to sell and deliver package. That pack, package beer, malt beverages and or wine as a qualified business in the city of Clarkston. Ms. Cowie.
Yes, Madam Mayor, again, this, this topic is for mayor and city council to discuss and or vote a request. From GoPuff to amend section three dash five eight, new licenses permitted for certain designated businesses. To allow the business to sell and deliver packaged beer, malt and or wine in the city of Clarkson. According to the applicant, the purpose of this request is to create an option for retail businesses. Who do not allow walking sales to receive a license for retail sale. Buy the package of beer, malt beverages and or wine. As of July third, twenty sixteen, the city no longer issues new licenses for the package sale of beer. Malt beverages and or wine for package stores, convenience stores, uh, other similar businesses. Or for any business other than those specifically identified in section three dash five eight of this article. Which is listed as a growler shop, a specialty wine shop, or grocery store. The applicant is requesting to add a newly defined business, retail delivery shop. Which means a retail establishment which is engaged in the retail sale of food products, household goods. And other sundry items for delivery only, that has a total interior floor area of not more than ten thousand square feet. Madam Mayor, Cameron Kilburg, the legal counsel for GoPuff, is attending the meeting, if you have any additional questions. For her, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie, and, and I have to take a, a point of order. I forgot to allow Mr. Yasu to speak, um, earlier. So we're just gonna pause and allow Mr. Yasu to speak for autism, and I, I apologize.
Alright, hello guys, my name is Adarete Owet and I will be speaking about autism today. Autism is a condition that causes those who have it to have trouble speaking and interacting with others. Autism can cause those who have it to engage. Autism can cause those who have it to engage in lim- like limited. Interested and how do I say it? What is it? And engage in routines. It can cause children to become speech delayed. And the condition can cause someone to engage in repetitive behaviors like repetitive movement and. Like repetitive, they're saying certain words over and over again and have poor eye contact. Autism impacts one out of 54 children with boys being four times more likely to have autism than girls. If autism is caught early enough and like it becomes a therapist can intervene and symptoms can improve over time for children. I would like to encourage people to not stigmatize autism as it is a condition and not a disease. I would also like to encourage the city council to like make sure that the police officers are trained to deal with people with. Developmental disorders and mental illnesses. Thank you.
For the comments. And just to reset, the new business that we have before us is item G one, amend section three dash fifty eight. New licenses permitted for certain designated businesses to define and permit a retail delivery shop to sell and deliver. Package beer, malt liquor, malt malt beverages, and other and or wine as a qualified business in the city of Clarkston. And Ms. Ms. Cowie, who did you say we had on the line from GoPuff?
Ms. Cameron Kilburg.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kilburg. Did you want to say a few words at this time?
I don't have anything specific to say. I think we had a good conversation last week, but if there are further questions, I'm here to answer them. But just want to reiterate, we, you know, we're excited and proud to be part of the community and we really hope we can bring the service to you guys. In the near future.
So are there any questions at this time or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just trying to speak to the council. I thought we were going to postpone. Postpone this item and so we could do some additional research. So I just wanted to see what they thought about that. Because I think that's the last conversation we had.
Okay, council members. Councilman, I mean Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think we discussed this thoroughly and. My feeling is, I think. There is certainly a room for a new form of business. Which could be alcohol delivery. However, I also have a strong feeling that. While we have a moratorium for brick and mortar businesses, I just feel it's not fair to. To allow a delivery business, which with the same product at the end of the day. So I think we need to consider. Either postponing this or. But if if we're going to allow a delivery of alcohol business, I don't see the point of having a moratorium for brick and mortar businesses. Even if we are allowing, I mean, even if the state allowed. Current business holders, or I mean license holders. But I just feel it's unfair here in Clarkson if we allow. New business which delivers alcohol while we are saying no more license for. Any more new brick and mortar businesses. So I I just look at this. We need to, if we're going to liberalize it, we need to liberalize it equally for all across board and. And that's how I still feel about it.
The comments from the council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I think I do agree with tabling it for one more month to do some more research on it. I would like to look into the history behind the moratorium on the new alcohol licenses. I don't know if it was originally intended to be. Moralizing to the point of saying, you know, we don't. Clarkston drinking, but maybe to avoid having all of the retail space usurped by that one type of business and blocking out others, in which case this would. Still meet those aims, but I also would like to have some consideration. Take just a little more time to see the impact on our existing businesses and I'm not talking about. You know, a year, but maybe another month to check in with our businesses and bring it back next month.
Okay.
So I would say I'd make a motion to table it for one month.
Okay. If if you were to make the motion, it would be to postpone, not necessarily to table. Okay. Are there any other comments from the council? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion to postpone this item until the next meeting, May meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we postpone item G one until the May council meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, are you ready for the question? All in favor of postponing item G one until the May council meeting, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed, and so we will postpone and add this to the May agenda item. Thank you, Ms. Kilbert. We'll have this for May to follow up.
Very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. You have a great day. And next we'll move on to G two, which is to approve the SPOSS. Zero four B and C Roland Street Pedestrian Enhancement and Trailhead Project Proposed Changes in Project Scope. Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as we discussed last week, this is, this item is for. To review and approve or deny the proposed changes to the SPOSS project that will add a sidewalk on Roland Street. From North Indian Creek to Lovejoy Street. Add a sidewalk on Roger Street from Market to North Indian Creek. And then mill and pave and construct two driveways and make drainage improvements. City right away along Roger Street, including re. Making improvements to the existing parking lot. In between Rogers and Roland Street. And the last item to remove proposed improvements on Hill Street, which were to include a landscaped median. And removing the parking on either side of Hill Street. The total, the net for these changes, they're listed individually with the additional costs. But the net increase in the project is $760,000. The original project that I had mentioned earlier during my updates, the. Trailhead near Mel Avenue. Down Roland Street, down to Norman Road, essentially Market and a small section on Norman Road. That included Hill Street, that project was a little, $1,081,011. So added to. 760,000 brings the total project cost to 1.84 million. Excuse me, the majority of this would come from our current SPOSS funding. As I stated last week, we would. Revise the, our list of SPOSS projects and likely defer. A project or potentially parts of two projects, but we would defer likely, as I mentioned last week, the. Proposed improvements to the, what was explained by Mr. Kaiser last week as the Norman Road Dam. Mr. Kaiser is on the call. I don't know Larry, if he wanted to add anything further to this item?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, thank you for the overview. Counsel, did you have any additional questions at this time?
I just wanted, could you roll up the agenda a little bit so I can see the changes on Hill Street, please? Mr. Gomez? Um, we had discussed removing the strip from Hill Street. Mr. Gomez?
Mr. Gomez, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Could we remove that from this?
The double yellow striping, we can take that out.
Thank you.
If that's, I mean, if that's what the council chooses to do, we will remove it.
Further, this is Councilman Carroll. For the striking. Sorry, for the stripping issue, can, could we hear from Larry Kaiser and if there are any safety concerns with removing the striping?
Yes. Yes, sir. The, so if we did not have parking, angled park. Parking on Hill Street, I would really not be concerned about removing the the W. Well, striping because we are going to basically narrow the road and those that are in the angle parking. Will be backing out into the through lane. The concern that I would have is that those that are backing out of the angle parking might not have any guidance. As to where the center of the road is. And so in this case, I would think that the double yellows should remain in place just from a safety standpoint.
Vice Mary Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for my interruption earlier, but I was just going to say. I really see the the safety on this and what difference it's going to make in terms of the. The 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 cost on the project. I mean, is it, is the cost that Councilmember Hopkins, I really, I'm not sure about. Why we are removing it. So and if we do, I would like to know how much of a difference will it make in the cost?
Is that a question for me or Mr. Kaiser?
Both, I guess.
So I think let's let's hear from Mr. Kaiser first.
So. Councilman, can you ask me? Again, because you cut out what what the question was again, I'm sorry.
Not, no problem. Well, I was just asking, I think I agree with you in terms of the safety concern that. But if we do remove it, I would like for you to to tell us how much of the cost would be. Would be changed or how much difference would it make the cost? And I would like to ask Councilmember Hopkins. If the her concern cost, I really would like to know why we are removing it or this asset, I don't know.
So the cost of the double yellow striping for that length of street is, since it's going to be thermoplastic striping, it's much probably. About $900 to $1,000 to to stripe that double yellow stripe on Hill Street.
Ms. Hopkins, your concern?
My concern is strictly aesthetic. Right now, that's like a very old walking neighborhood and I think. First thing, I'm not sure I see the safety difference. A Kroger parking lot that has angled and no yellow stripes in almost every parking we've ever been in. In our lives that has no yellow stripes. I think the yellow stripes really detracts from the environment for the walkers. For the people who are not pulling in and out of parking, it tends to speed them up. And so I just think, I mean, it's ugly and it's not necessary. It does detract from the. Pastoral walking neighborhood atmosphere. And we've been a city here. For 135 years, there has been side of that forever and we've never had stripes and I don't see it being. A problem. So I think it's like a solution in search of a problem and it would detract from the aesthetics of the city.
Okay. Thank you for your comment and your feedback. Counsel, do you have any other comments at this time?
The one thing I would say is that if the concern is maintain a pastoral walking atmosphere, then it seems like the raised landscape median would be one way to do that. But, you know, it seems like the council's desire is to get rid of that. So if we're going to get rid of that and leave it for more parking, it seems like the concern is more for parking than making it a pastoral walking. Atmosphere. So. That if we're going to have more parking, I think we need at least the safety of the stripe and I would defer to Larry Kaiser's expertise because none of us are engineers and he is on this one issue.
Carol, any other comments from the council?
I would like to ask if we've had any accidents there because there has always been parking there and there has never been yellow stripes.
I guess that would be either Mr. Gomez or someone to be able to answer that question for Councilwoman Hopkins.
The question was whether there have been any vehicle crashes on that segment of Hill Street?
On Hill Street, yeah.
Not to my knowledge, but I've seen people almost get hit by cars. I've probably seen half a dozen near crashes. I've seen people turn from Hill Street onto Rogers without stopping at the stop sign. I've seen a car, there've been quite a few near ones. I I agree with everyone and Mr. Kaiser, this is a safety issue. I don't want to see or. Hear that somebody did hit somebody else and Councilwoman, just because there haven't been any accidents, which is good, doesn't mean that it's not the right thing to do.
You, Mr. Gomez, any other comments from the council? Vice Mary Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I really have. I think the safety, I believe, would surpass the. The aesthetic value. So I, and it's not going to make a lot of difference in terms of the 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 cost. So I really feel maybe in the future, if we see that. We can remove it. I don't see that, but I think for now, I really would recommend that we listen to the. To the advice that was given by the engineer and I just move over on this agenda item. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
Madam, this Hassan, I agree with the engineer and Jimmy and because. To me, it doesn't actually make it, you know, make a point to remove, you know, you know, stripes. So I agree with Larry.
And just a quick question, when we're replacing those mailboxes, are we doing it on both sides of the street or is it on one side of the street in terms of those mailboxes?
Ms. Mayor, you referring to Norman Road?
Or where, I think it's in here, it's in this document that says that we're going to replace the mailboxes.
It would only be, Larry, it would only be on the side where where we place the side of the street where the sidewalk will be constructed.
Correct.
So it's not all, to answer your question, Mayor, it's not all of them. It's only where we place the sidewalk and have to relocate mailboxes. Similar to what occurred on Norman Road.
And I don't think actually there are any residential places there. And I don't think actually there are any residential slices there. Are there any that require even a mailbox to be placed on?
There will be some on Roland and I don't think any on Rogers, but yes, on Roland, right, Larry?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay. Is there anything else? Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Have a motion, Madam Mayor. Can, can I see that more, the item? Thank you. Well, I move that we approve the SPOSS Roland Street pedestrian enhancement and Trailhead project proposed change in the project scope.
Second.
The second?
It's been properly moved in second that we approve the SPOSS zero four B and C Roland Street pedestrian enhancement and trail project proposed changes in project scope. Is there any discussion?
One thing I would, the one thing I would say before we have a vote is, is this with the stripes or without the stripes? When it's just approved as is, does that include striping?
Striping. It, we did not say anything else. We didn't modify it. We didn't change it. So how it is, the motion has been placed with what is currently in place with the document we have in front of us. Okay. Any other discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor of approving the SPOSS zero four B and C Roland Street pedestrian enhancement and Trailhead project proposed changes in project scope, say aye.
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 All opposed, all against, say nay? Any abstentions?
I'm staying.
Okay. The motion has passed. Thank you, everyone. And now we will proceed to item G three, which is amend the city charter to modernize certain provisions to amend Article four of the Charter regarding budgeting appropriation and auditing to repeal conflicting provisions. And Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, as we discussed last week, these, this is the first council, the first reading and approval of the ordinance to adopt the changes proposed by the Charter Review Committee. I think about two years ago. The changes again are to establish that the, add the personnel rules to the actual city charter. They currently are not in the city charter to that the municipal court shall have, again, to add in the charter that the court shall have the authority to hear the nuisance abatement actions and enforce the nuisance abatement ordinance to alter in the charter, the oath of office, as is listed, that it would remove the language, so help me God. And the fourth one that the the, excuse me, the next one that the, some of the budget process, excuse me, the budget processes specifically, the submittal of the budget, the budget message, the procedures for making changes to the budgets, that those would be added to the charter. So they currently, again, are not in the charter. A little bit more of the detail is listed in the item. But any, again, changes to the budget. And then the last one that the annual audit is also, some of the language is just improved or enhanced to include in the charter that a little change in the language that a certified public accountant or accounting firm will perform the annual audit. We will make it available to the public. It will be placed on the city's internet site. We can provide it directly for anybody who makes a request, but to make it even more easily available for the public. So these were the changes that were proposed by the Charter Review Committee some time ago. This has been reviewed and discussed at numerous council meetings and the item before you this evening is the first of, again, the first reading and approval of the proposed ordinance.
Mr. Gomez, and I would like to take this opportunity to again, thank the Charter Review Committee for all the time that they spent reviewing our charter and making these proposed changes. We really appreciate our community getting involved, such as the members of this committee. So again, thank you. Ms. Hood was unable to stay on the call, but I know Mr. Medford and Mr. Moore, who were a part of the committee are on the call. Did you have any comments at this time? Mr. Medford, I see your hands raised and-
I won't suppose to speak for Susan, but I will say that I, I think she would also say that these changes were very well thought out, very well researched, very well worked through by the entire committee with lots of public input. Very fair system. So I would like the council to hopefully take them all as one suggestion. We've had lots of time to review these. It's been at least a year now. So hopefully anybody had any changes, we would have already heard them, heard back on any of them. So thank you very much for reviewing this and taking it up. Thank you.
Not hearing any comments. Again, we will review this document as we stated at the work session. We were in, we were in, in agreement that we were gonna keep it as is in terms of making the changes so that from our city attorney, we can go ahead and proceed with the reading and vote. So at this time, if, are there any other comments or questions from the council?
This, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
I'm still not, you know, standing why, help me God is removed.
That was just a recommendation at that time from our committee. So that's, that was why we were saying if, if there were any changes from the work session, make sure that came up.
Now, I, I, yeah, I speak about it for the first reading and I'm still standing behind my, behind that and I'm not voting unless, you know, that has to be put it back. It's not bothering anybody. It's been there. We say that every day. You said it today. Oh dear. So that's my idea. I'm sorry. Just drink a water.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Hassan, for expressing your concern about that item. And we appreciate that. And Vice Mary Yasu, you also had a concern or question?
Uh, I just, I'm curious. I do recall, actually, I was at the, when this was, this item was discussed by the committee. I was and present and I, I think I understand that this is to secularize the, you know, the, the but I think as Councilmember Hassan said, you know, we still have it on our pledge of allegiance and I'm pretty sure we can't change the pledge of allegiance, obviously, but um, I, I'm thinking to see but it's possible to make it optional, just like a wedding vow. If somebody wants it, that, that could be added, but maybe we could just pass it without it. Is there a way to do that, Mr. Quinn?
Hey, sorry, it took me a sec to get unmuted. I mean, I guess we could print two different oaths in the charter and have it say that the person being sworn in will take one of these two oaths and just have that be the difference.
In terms of tonight, what from a procedural, what we have to do?
Well, we would need a motion to approve the ordinance with the amendment that the, the language in the section dealing with the oath of office would have two options and the, they would be the same except for one of the two would have so help me God at the end. I mean, it, it would, or, you know, I mean, we, obviously this thing has gone on for a while and I don't think there's any rush. So I could, we could also, and we, we have not advertised this yet. So another viable option would be just to postpone the decision till the next meeting. In the meantime, I can write it up in that way. And so we'll have it there before us nice and neat.
So if, if that is the pleasure of the council to either have two options or to I guess keep so help me God. We need to make sure in terms of this meeting, what is that pleasure for the council?
This is Councilman Carroll. I would be fine with having two options. So the people that want God's help can ask for it. People that don't want God's help, don't have to ask for it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have no, I have no problem for two options. I mean, anybody who don't wanna want it can say without God and anyone who wants, say, help me God. So let them make a choice.
Thank you, Councilman Hassan. So, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins? You're on mute.
I think it is appropriate to deal with government in the most universally diverse way. And I do know people that pray to a goddess. I know polytheistic people and I also know monotheistic people, Christians, who it is staunchly against their religion to take an oath against God. They would or take an oath using God's name. They would consider that blasphemy. So I think saying there's only two is options. There's a God or there's not a God, or if you believe in God, but you don't choose this oath, then you don't feel that you need his help. And I think that gets into a whole new range of complications that is not necessary or required. And there's no way to include any deities and not eliminate people or make it inappropriate for people to say it or make it so that when some people are saying it, they simply don't mean it. And they would be possibly blaspheming against the, the God that you would choose to honor. So I think maybe we could put in a clause that if a person would like to add a phrase of religious nature, that they can add a phrase of religious nature, but not tell out what that is. Like so help me God or goddess or gods or higher path or whatever.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. So what we have is the existing document, the way that it is. Or I'm hearing someone wanting to do an option. So I will entertain whatever the council wants at this time, whether you want to can take the recommendations from the Charter Review or if you have another option. And Vice Mary Yasu?
I, I thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, in a way, I kind of feel how, what Laurel meant because I sure don't wanna be harsh to anybody who don't wanna say, doesn't, doesn't say the word, doesn't mean that he's against any religious beliefs. And and I think we're not really trying to say, people who say it are against religion or people who say it are religion. But all the point is just leave an option. If people wanna say, since it's already there. If it wasn't there, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't mind taking it out, but since it was already there and there is a, a sentiment within the city council to leave it there. So instead of taking it out, just, I think, just like our city attorney said, let's just table it for now and get another optional version where people could actually have another alternative of saying that, without the word, so help me God.
Madam, this is Councilman Perkins.
Yes, sir.
I had a question for Councilman Hassan. I guess this might kind of loop you into this too, Mr. Quinn. Would it be, would, would it fulfill the, sort of the desire of the rest of the council to have a provision for people invoking a deity in their oath, if it wasn't in writing, but people have the freedom to say it as they were administered their oath, even though it wasn't a part of the official document? Or is the desire to have it in writing?
Quinn?
Um, I mean, I, I don't have a desire one way or the other. I think that the other parts of the oath that come before that are what's legally important regarding the duties of the office. And, you know, there's also a state law for our elected officials that there's a, a different oath that's very similar. But I don't think that having the reference to God or a deity is either necessary or necessarily a problem. I mean, I really don't have any opinion on that.
Maybe I should clarify my, my question. So I guess for, for you, Mr. Quinn, it would be, is there a, is there a legal problem with having someone, you know, respond to the end of the oath as stated with so help me God, adding that at the end without in any way invalidate the previous portion of the oath? And then for Councilman Hassan, and I guess really the rest of the council, would that be an acceptable sort of compromise to move this forward? Or do we feel like we need to postpone this for a future meeting?
Oh, so, so you mean like that it would be just sort of an informal option? Anyone that wants to say that can just go ahead and say it after they've said the written oath? That would be fine legally, sure.
Yeah.
This is Councilor Hassan. Mark. Last week, when, when you took the oath, you did said, God help me, right?
I did, yes.
Did it actually make any difference that you, 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 you know, whether you said it or not? But you followed the, you know, the rhythm, right?
Uh, for me personally, I appreciated it, but I also understand Councilwoman Hopkins' point, you know, that not everyone-
No, no, no. See, see, you know, we're not making it this secular, or, you know, you, you know, everybody in, in this life believing God, whatever, you know, whichever God, he, you know, he believes it, you know. But all I wanted is, it's been there forever. And everybody knows that he will believe, except, you know, the atheists, you know, that there's a God. So leave it, so help me God there. It's not gonna hurt you. He may help you, we don't know, but it's been there and we, and everybody have a God and we know there is a God. So I'm not arguing, you know, for religious, I'm a Muslim and I believe in God, but I'm not arguing that, you know, it has to be there. But just leave it there. It's a simple phrase that may help you or may not, but it, it's been there forever and it's a good word. That's all I'm, I'm arguing for now. Whatever everybody believes is a different story. I'm not asking everybody to believe in God. Your God is your God. I believe in my God. But just leave the phrase in there. It's been there. It's, we shouldn't even discuss this. Because basically that's, you know, where I stand. So I, I hope I don't, you know, offend anybody, but I believe in God. but I believe in God and I want that phrase to be there.
Thank you, Councilman Hassan. And thank you, Councilman Perkins, for bringing that point up. So we've heard a lot of discussion at this point. Is there any other discussion that we would like to have? And if not, I would like to entertain a motion.
Okay, motion of what?
On how to proceed with this agenda item.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
No.
I have a motion that we, uh, table this agenda item until next month so that, uh, uh, our city attorney can prepare, um, the necessary, uh, provision change.
I second. Let's, before we, we do that, we have to, for agenda items, if we're gonna move it to another meeting, it has to be postponed, that tabled. And then what is it that we are requesting that our city attorney do? So do you want to restate the motion and then we will have something to vote from there?
Sure. I move that, uh, we, uh, postpone this agenda item until, uh, next month's meeting so that, uh, the city attorney can, um, add a provision on the, uh, oath of office, uh, section, um, to have an alternative, uh, um, pledge.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and properly second that we postpone Agenda Item G3, to allow a provision for the oath of office. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, could, could we amend that to, to hold off on adding any additions to it? And is, we're gonna go through another council meeting process? It seems like it might be in our business just to have that further discussion next, uh, next work session. Um, and then, uh, and then we can kind of summarize any kind of changes that we would like to have made. We can go ahead and move forward that way. So we don't duplicate any efforts. Is that appropriate?
I'm sorry, Councilman Perkins. What, what are you, what was your, your request?
I, I was just saying, instead of having Mr. Quinn go ahead and prepare a, a second version of it, it sounds like there might still be some discussion or, or are we through in, in terms of the actual wording or any language changes? Do we see any future changes happening at the next work session?
Uh, well, that, that's for the council at this point to bring up, um, because we, we talked about this at last work session, last, last work session. So, um, Council, Councilman Hassan, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Owick, Yasu.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanna, uh, well, I think if there is anything that you would recommend, uh, Councilmember Perkins, you can definitely bring it up, just like, uh, Councilmember Hassan brought this up. And, uh, uh, certainly this is not an urgent, I mean, this, this things have been done and it's been sitting on the shelf for about a year now. So I mean, it's not, nothing gonna hurt. Nobody's gonna get hurt because of, we didn't pass this. So, uh, we can definitely, uh, if you feel there is something that you would like to see amended, bring it up on the next agenda item, but meeting. But right now we have a motion and a second. Uh, let's just go ahead and vote on this and, um, get it done.
Uh, Madam Mayor, can I clarify real quick my, my question? Yeah, so my, my question isn't changing the language. My question is, is, um, with the motion itself, we're asking Mr. Quinn to go ahead and add language on the front end before our next session. And so my question is, would it be more prudent of us to wait in case there's, I don't have anything in particular I'm thinking of. Um, but if there's further discussion to be had that we, you know, assign any, uh, any additional work to Mr. Quinn after we, you know, we're clear on those changes, unless, unless we feel like we're, it sounded like there's still some disagreement in terms of what that language to be, um, with this amendment to the city charter. Does that make sense? Or we, we, go ahead.
No, no, it makes sense. So, so let me make sure, and, and let me make sure I clarify. The, the concern that you're bringing up is that we provide Mr. Quinn the language so that he can go ahead and update the document so that we'll have it ready for the work session so that we can avoid any other changes to it. Is that?
It was, it was more possibly waiting between the work session and, you know, to, to send him any changes until after we discussed it during the work session. And so right now, the, the, uh, the motion is to, uh, have, you know, ta, you know, postpone this until the next work session, correct? And have, uh, Mr. Quinn include the, you know, the, the current oath as well as the proposed changes as two different options. Um, so we can do that. But my suggestion was, why don't we wait to, you know, send the future work or any more work his way in, in case there's any additions or any, any more discussion that needs to be had about that? And maybe, maybe, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I was finished. I, I'm just trying to make sure I'm communicating. So my, the, the motion is to go ahead and, and amend the, um, the current language of the amendment to the city charter, correct? And so I'm just raising the question, should we hold off on amending anything if it sounds like there's more discussion to be had? Um, if we're all in agreement on that amendment, is there any reason to not go ahead and pass it tonight? If we're still, there's some discussion to be had, should we go ahead and postpone any, you know, any, any work that we're forwarding to Mr. Quinn until after this discussion at the work session?
Okay.
So if I could just weigh in real quick.
Go ahead.
Please.
Um, it sounds like I've heard three options. One, well, actually I've heard four options. One would be to leave the oath exactly like it is. One would be to strike out So Help Me God. One would be to have alternative oaths printed in the charter. It says that the oath taker will choose between one of these two oaths. And then they would be printed with and without So Help Me God. And the fourth option I heard was, um, to basically print the oath without So Help Me God and then put like in, in brackets at the end that the oath taker has the option to add their religious declaration if they choose. Uh, so I, you mean, I could just type those four options up pretty quickly, send them to the council to set up the discussion for the work session. And that's no big deal. Um, but I think as far as the action that's being taken now, the real action is to, uh, postpone to next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And I guess Mr. Quinn stated four options. And from a council, we can vote on the proposed motion right now. And then if we need to follow up to let him know to have option one, two, three, or four for the work session. Um, is that something that we need to do here today, Mr. Quinn? Just, just for, or we can wait?
No. I mean, you certainly can, but i- it, since we don't seem to have a total consensus, I'd be, I think it would be just fine just to vote to postpone and then y'all give me direction when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion at this point? Hearing none? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of postponing Item G3, um, to, to add the oath? Um, to add, let me make sure, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor Yasu, let's redo the, um, the, uh, motion. I want to make sure I get it right.
Well, it was to, um, to, to postpone it, the agenda item until next month's meeting so that, uh, our city attorney can, um, amend the provision on the, uh, on the oath of office.
Right. So we, at this time, we will entertain a motion to postpone until next council meeting, um, Item G3 to allow our city attorney to change the oath. Is there any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move to Item G4, which is the proclamation recognizing Pet Month for April. And that would be me. And so, um, this is something where we, we did it in the past and we just want to make sure in terms of, um, helping our furry family members to have proper vaccinations, rabies and other shots necessary. Um, we wanted to make sure that we recognized it this month. So, um, and I want to thank the council and we're looking forward to our partnership with the Georgia, um, Animal, uh, Alliance. And so I strongly recommend if you know someone who has a, a pet and they need to take advantage of these services, it will happen on April 25th, on Sunday, April 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Mylum Park. This will be a no contact, um, service. So we will make sure in terms of taking your animal, getting your animal vaccinated or the other shots that they need to have in terms of rabies, um, nail clipping, all those microchips. If you want to make sure to, um, provide, get those services for your pets, this would be an excellent opportunity to do this. So please, if you know someone who has a pet, let them know about it, um, and let them know that these services are available. Um, council, did you have any other comments at this time? Hearing none, uh, entertain a motion.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move, okay, I'm sorry. I move to adopt the proclamation recognizing Pet Month for April.
Second.
Second. Thank you. It's been properly moved and second that we recognize the proclamation, approve the proclamation recognizing Pet Month for April. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to G5, which is to adopt a resolution by the Clarkston Mayor and City Council in response to hate crimes against Asian Americans. And so this went along with myself, Councilman Carol and, uh, Councilwoman Johnson. We wanted to make sure that we, we let our community know that we are in support of, um, our Asian American communities. And as a community of a welcoming city, we want to make sure that our residents know that we do not have hate in our city and we don't have room for hate in our city. And so however, we can ensure that our communities, our Asian American communities and all of our communities understand that we support them. And so we just want to make sure in light of recent events, especially since, um, there's been an uptick of assaults against Asian Americans, especially since we've had COVID-19, that our community knows that we are here to support them. And so, you know, so it's very important for us to make a statement that we do. And so Councilman Carol, did you have any other comments?
I, I don't. I think I said I needed to stay at the work session.
Councilwoman Johnson.
No, I do not.
Okay. Any other council member would like to make a statement at this time? Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I certainly, um, uh, uh, appreciate, uh, this resolution. And I definitely would like to say that, um, uh, we, uh, as a city, uh, welcoming city, as you said it properly, Madam Mayor, um, we, um, we oppose to any, uh, hate. Um, and I just want to say that, um, we, uh, we are doing this right now in light of, uh, recent events. And I would like to re, remind our communities that every time, um, there is a, a major event, like 9/11, then, uh, you know, people were, uh, Muslims were targeted. And then you had COVID-19 and then you have Asian Americans being targeted. I just want to say it's really, um, sad that, um, uh, uh, an entire community is blamed for the disease. An entire community is blamed for acts of a few individuals. Um, this is, uh, definitely not something we, uh, we welcome here in our city, in our welcoming city. So I, I definitely would like to, uh, I just want to mention that, um, all minorities, uh, African Americans, Asian Americans, um, uh, Native Americans, uh, Caucasian Americans for that fact. All communities are welcoming Clarkson and, uh, I definitely would like to condemn any kind of blaming, uh, specific, uh, in communities, entire communities, just because of a disease or because of actions of, uh, a few individuals. Thank you.
We have the comments from the council. Hearing none. I, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I would just like to say I'm completely in support of this as well. Obviously, we, we pride ourselves very much on being a welcoming community. I would like to believe there's absolutely no hate in Clarkson. I, I can't believe that would be a fact. But it is important to make the sa, the statement that this city does not support that point of view and would do everything within our power to make sure everyone feels welcome and embraced and is encouraged to live their best life in Clarkston regardless of your, their demographics.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution by the clerk, it's the mayor and city council in response to hate crimes against Asian Americans.
Second.
I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we adopt a resolution by the Clarkston Mayor and City Council in response to hate crimes against Asian Americans. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. And now we have adjournment and I will entertain a motion at this time. Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
I second. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great day. Have a great week.